I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, September 14, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which link, meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. Prayer tonight will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderwoman Lou will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here via Zoom. I can hear everyone, and I am attending remotely to protect my unvaccinated children.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present via Zoom because of medical issues, and I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Mulcher.
I'm here.
You have 10 physically in attendance and two participating via Zoom.
Thank you.
Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. First, I just want to briefly touch on our COVID-19 status. Of course, public health continues to monitor this on a daily basis. We're still in substantial transmission, although things seem to have stabilized a bit. The positivity rate, in other words, the number of people who test and come out with COVID, the positivity rate has been 5.5%. That's a little less than the last time I spoke to you. And the number of new cases per 100,000 for 14 days is still over 200, but again, in the last few days, there have been a few less cases than in the previous weeks. So we continue to look at all that carefully. Madam President, there were two very nice ceremonies and events which I wanted to mention to you and to the community. I want to thank the Fire Department for sponsoring and hosting the 9/11 memorial that was held on Saturday at the fire station on East Hollis Street. A number of people attended, our fire and police departments, of course, and others. And it was just, you know, a sad day because we were thinking back to what occurred 20 years ago and all the lives that were lost in the 9/11 attacks. But it was great that the Fire Department put that entire ceremony together. Also, Madam President, on Sunday, there was a welcoming week celebration at Greeley Park at the Banshell, put on by our Cultural Connections Committee, and I wanted to thank Deepa Mongalot and our entire committee for working on that. There was some really beautiful dancing by, and other entertainment, music, drums, other things, by a whole group of people. And it seemed everybody had a good time, and everybody did a really good job on that event, so I wanted to thank all of them. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention the escrows, which I know are up for a final vote tonight. Of course, that has gone to the Finance, to the Budget Committee. As I said before, I won't go through it in the same level of detail, but over half the money is being allocated into equipment purchases. Without this allocation, there would be no equipment purchase this year. And this is the practice that we've adopted over the last number of budget years to use unappropriated, unused funds, unspent funds, to make equipment purchases. So this would be equipment that's required by the Public Works, Fire, Police, and our other departments to make sure that our fleet of vehicles and equipment remains in good repair and up to date. A lot of the other money is being allocated into various trust accounts for, to save future taxes or reserve accounts against the need for unexpected building repairs and other things. I know that the Budget Committee discussed it in quite some detail and did, of course, their usual thorough review, and therefore, I think it is ready to be passed. And that's it for my remarks, Madam President.
Thank you. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Seeing none, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular Board of Alderman and Special Board of Alderman meetings of August 10, August 23, and August 24, 2021 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Manager, Capital Improvements Committee CIC Secretary, regarding Second Amendment to Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, from President Lori Willschirr, Board of Alderman, calling Special Board of Alderman meetings on September 21, 2021 at 7:00 PM to have a discussion with members of the New Hampshire retirement system, and on October 14, 2021 at 7:00 PM relative to updates on the wastewater rates and the paving program. Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Heard for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Do you name an address for the record, please?
My name is Bob Keating, 5 Coburn Woods, a member of Granite State Organizing Project. The reason I'm here tonight is to thank a number of people, including the Economics Director, Mr. Cummings, and the mayor, and many of, almost everyone that spoke in regards to the American Recovery Act, the monies, the $16 million, and the amount of support for the number-two option, I guess it was called B, for the Affordable Housing Trust in up to $10 million. And I just thank you, that's my main message. Thank you for President Willschirr, likewise, for, you know, your support. And I know there's going to be three more public meetings, you know, about it. I like that it's happening quicker, too. I mean, we've got a lot more time to be able to do it, but I think that clearly to be able to get that money distributed would be, sooner would be better. And I hope the continued support so that number B becomes number one in terms of when the vote comes out. So again, it's just thank you for the support.
Mr. Westgate.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you, President. I hope you all hear me.
Yeah.
My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett in Nashua, 111 Conker Street. I represent Harbor Homes. Harbor Homes operates the Harbor Clinic at 45 High Street, which I'm sure the board is aware of, has operated it since approximately 2009. Harbor Clinic serves about 70% or so of its patients, and the last numbers I saw are Nashua residents. It's basically an at-risk population who gets no cost or low-cost medical care. I'm speaking tonight briefly, Madam President, relative to proposed Resolution R 21156, which pertains to an option agreement which would enable Harbor Homes to lease potentially 15 spaces in the Factory Street Lot adjacent to 45 High Street, the Harbor Homes, the Harbor Clinic. The reason we have been working with the city relative to this proposed legislation is because of the school street project and the closing of the school street parking lot in connection with Lansing Melbourne Group's development of that project. When we became aware of the project, we had concerns because patients used the school street lot, and the initial design of the Lansing Melbourne project would have involved elimination of the school street lot entirely. So we contacted the city. Tim Cummings reached out to us very kindly. We began working with him relative to the possibility of creating this option agreement to enable us to have a ability to lease 15 spaces in the Factory Street Lot. That led to very wonderful cooperation involving both all aspects of the city boards and officials, as well as Lansing Melbourne Group, in permitting a redesign of their project to allow some surface parking under the proposed apartment complex they would be building. So that has led to this legislation. We would respectfully hope and that the board tonight would consider approving it. What it boils down to is it would give Harbor Homes a one-year option commencing with the closure of the school street lot to determine whether to exercise the right to lease for five years, 15 spaces, in the Factory Street Lot. It gives Harbor Homes a little bit of time to determine how those needs may play out, and then can make that determination and enter into the lease if so needed. So we thank the mayor and the other cosponsors of the legislation, thank the Committee on Infrastructure for its recommendation of approval, especially thanks Mr. Cummings and Celia Leonard, who I worked with in some detail to create this documentation. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this evening? Items that were expected to be acted upon this evening. Seeing none. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for transit security monitoring.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Madam President, I motion to accept and place it on file and award the contract for security monitoring for the Transit Center, Transit Administration, and Transit Garage from Johnson Controls Security in an amount not to exceed $7,240, $1,440 per year for a five-year term. Funding will be through Department 186 Transportation Fund 55699, other contracted services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 a's and zero n's.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections. There being no objection, I will declare that the Board of Alderman meet in joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing a trustee, and I call for nominations.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Tom Maffey. I'm on the Board of Trustees, the Edgewood Cemetery. Tonight, we would like to nominate Robert McIntosh, Douglas Gagnon, Mike Lozo, Carl Andre, and Tom Maffey.
Thank you. Seeing no further nominations, without objection, I will close nominations.
Would you like me to call the roll, President Mulcher?
Yes, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, I approve Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Cle.
I say vote in favor of Thomas McAfee, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I vote in favor of Thomas Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I vote in favor of Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I vote for Carl Andre, Tom Maffey, Mike Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Doug Gagnon.
Alderman Clemmons.
I vote for Maffey, Gagnon, Andre, McIntosh, and Lozo.
Alderman Tenza.
Thomas Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes, trustee Maffey, trustee Andre, trustee Lozo, trustee McIntosh, trustee Gagnon.
Alderman Jettie.
Thomas Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Schmidt.
I vote for Thomas McAfee, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Cleaver.
He's muted.
Yep, you're on mute. Alderman Cleaver, you're on mute. I can hear you. We could come back to Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes, for Thomas McAfee, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
Alderman Mulcher.
Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Doug Gagnon.
Trustee Andre.
Carl Andre, Tom Maffey, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Doug Gagnon.
Trustee Armstrong. Trustee Douglas Barker.
Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, Mike Lozo, Bob McIntosh, and Doug Gagnon.
Trustee Alan Barker. Trustee Hall. Trustee Hollis.
Yes, I vote, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes. I can.
Yes, I vote for Mr. Maffey, Mr. Andre, Mr. Lozo, Mr. McIntosh, Mr. Gagnon. Thank you.
Trustee Hall, are you in attendance?
I am. Trustee Andre, trustee Maffey, trustee Lozo, trustee McIntosh, trustee Gagnon.
Trustee Law. Trustee Maffey.
Robert McIntosh, Doug Gagnon, Mike Lozo, Carl Andre, Tom Maffey.
Mayor Donches.
Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, Bob McIntosh, Doug Gagnon, and Mike Lozo.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry about the mute problem. I vote for Thomas Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
You have 19 votes for Thomas Maffey, Carl Andre, Michael Lozo, Robert McIntosh, and Douglas Gagnon.
That motion carries. I'll declare the appointments of the following to the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees: Tom Maffey, Carl Andre, with terms to expire March 31, 2026; Michael Lozo, with a term to expire March 31, 2025; Robert McIntosh and Douglas Gagnon, with terms to expire March 31, 2022. Are any of those people here to take the oath of office this evening? Please come forward. Thank you. There being no objection, I will declare that the joint invention now arise. Following appointments by the Board of Alderman will be read into the record.
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Marjorie Ballinger Hogan, 67 Canine Gate Road, Nashua, and Liz Richopy of 15 Middle Dunstable Road, Nashua, to the Ira F. Harris Lecter Trustees, for terms to expire December 31, 2023, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed, submitted by President Lori Willschirr for the Board of Alderman. And to the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed James E. Pyle of 14 Elliston Circle, Nashua, to the Energy and Environment Committee for a term to expire October 31, 2024, and Stacy Vignalt of 6 New Hampshire Avenue, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire January 31, 2024, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed, respectfully submitted by Mayor James Donches.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the Board of Alderman, and the mayor is read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, finance, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the August 4, August 18, and September 1 finance committees be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the August 9, 2021 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the August 11, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August 31, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the September 2, 2021 Work Study Group relative to the Police Commission be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee held Monday night regarding Resolution 21161. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Willschirr. We met last night in the chamber. Director Bagley came and spoke on this piece of legislation, it is additional funds, grant money for two years to help with the enhanced detection of COVID-19, so you can understand the need to expedite this, and their plan is to use the money, obviously, for some day-to-day things, but bring on a couple of full-time employees who can help the department as they're working through the pandemic.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Historic District Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following appointment from alternate to member to the Historic District Commission. William Slavinsky, 46 Berkeley Street, Nashville, with a term to expire June 30, 2022. Is Mr. Slavinsky here this evening? No, he will be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. John Paul Boucher, 8 Fox Metal Road, Nashua, and Rob Shaw, 14 Sweet Williams Circle, Nashville, with terms to expire September 11, 2024. Is Mr. Boucher here? And Mr. Shaw is not here, so, okay, they will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 21154, approving the use of additional U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program funds by Habitat for Humanity for 10 Paxton Terrace.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I'd like to move for final passage of R 21154.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21154. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 a's and zero n's.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21154 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21156, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into an option agreement with Harbor Homes, Inc., for parking lease.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-21156, and if I may speak briefly.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As was stated in the public comment, there's no need to really say too much more, but Harbor Homes did have a problem with parking. This is one way to work with our community partners during the construction of this vital downtown project, so I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21156. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 a's and zero n's.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21156 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21158, establishing an expendable trust fund for recreation facilities for east side of Nashua, funded by appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of $750,000 into the expendable trust fund.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 21158 by roll call, and like to speak to it very briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this was recommended for final approval at the Budget Committee.
That was brief.
Did you cut a couple of words there?
He gets so wordy.
You said brief. Okay, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 21158. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 a's and zero n's.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21158 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21159, relative to the transfer of the fiscal year 2022 original adopted budget contingency for grants and corresponding offsetting revenue into a non-lapsing grant fund.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution 21159.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21159. Discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Just a question. What committee was this, did this go to?
I imagine it went to Budget. Did it go to Budget, Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Y'all set, Alderman Lou?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21159. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 a's and zero n's.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21159 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21160, relative to the supplemental appropriation of of $250,000 into expendable trust fund established for the Business and Industrial Development Authority.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 21160.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and 1 nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21160 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21161, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $621,556 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity, COVID-19 enhanced detection.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I motion for final passage of R. 21161.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 ayes and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21161 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21162, relative to the reappropriation of fiscal year 2022 escrows.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21162, and like to speak to it briefly.
Briefly? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this was approved by the Budget Committee, and there are several items on it that are very critical to the city and recommend final passage.
Motion is for final passage. Resolution 21162. Discussion? Alderman Lou.
I had a question. First of all, if the board does not approve this, what can be done with those funds?
They would lapse to the general fund.
And that means they would become available?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I have a couple of items that I wanted to just discuss. Can I continue?
Yes.
So, the mayor and I sat down and I studied these escrows, and there were some of them that I just thought were worth mentioning or questioning. But of course, they're all on four sheets of paper, but the items that we're looking at for approval, I am questioning line number 31, that calls for $75,000 for Elm Street Middle School study, and the reason I'm objecting to that is that that was already appropriated in one of the mayor's approvals on line 50. I can tell you the page if you'd like, but let me know if anyone needs that information. Line 28 for Your Voice, Your Choice, I think that's a wonderful program, but that was already appropriated in one of the mayor's approved reappropriations. Line 23 for cell phones, my concern is, we do budget $135,000 for cell phones for the city staff, and I question whether 7,000 could be put together or used. All requests for cellphone budgets were approved in our budget process, and so I'd like to consider putting that toward something else. Line 9, disc golf, for $30,000, disc golf was, well, it was discontinued in our discussion of it earlier this year. Line 126 and 127, earmark 3 million for surf, and my question is just that surf is scheduled for 1.9 million in cash, and the rest has been scheduled for budget, so I wondered, the total is 2.5 million, I believe, so I wondered about the additional 500,000 there. I wanted to just point out a couple of things, so for that reason, I would like to move that those items be separated and that we vote separately for them. That would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 lines, for a total of 162,000.
Motion is to separate the question. Discussion on that motion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cleve.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
She's muted.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Kelly. You have 2 ayes and 10 nays.
And that motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 21162. Alderman Lou.
I just had a couple of other comments I wanted to make. It's been said that we've already taken the money from these people, so, you know, we need to find something to do with it. I just wanted to, you know, I talked to a lot of my ward residents, and a lot of them find that, well, their point that they seem to be trying to make to me is that you already took it from us, but you could give it back. I understand we need to keep our contingency and our surplus and keep our books in good shape, but I don't think that resonates very well with the residents when they hear us justifying these reappropriations by we already took the money from them. I just want to point out, there remains an appropriation of the mayor's of $755,000 for a roof replacement at 84 Court Street that has been nearly completed and paid for last week. The mayor's approved likes to operating expenses end up being $450,000 in redundant funding to city, for city expenses. What I mean by that is that the budget was made. In most cases, what was asked for was budgeted, but at this point, we're going to give them that all over again, in the amount of $450,000. So different expenses like cell phones, conferences, you know, any different expense is now, instead of keeping to the budget that we said, we're giving, you know, more operating expenses. And finally, $53,000 is going to Shady Lane Courts. The Shady Lane Courts have been completed. Barriers for $60,000. My understanding is we've bought the barriers. The Elm Street Middle School study is duplicated. The mayor approved 50,000, and we are approving 75. Thank you. That's all I wanted to point out.
Any further discussion? Motion before us is to recommend final passage of Resolution 21162. Oh, Alderman Clemmons, sorry.
Not a problem. Thank you very much, President Wiltshire. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that we could definitely let this money lapse into the general fund, be millions of dollars, or we could put it towards tax relief. However, my view of this is that the benefit of spending this money in the various ways in which are proposed, help various people across the city, various interests, and it is more beneficial for us to spend this money this way because we've already collected it from taxpayers than to give it back to them only to ask for it later on, and with inflation being the way it is, have it even more expensive. So, this is a better use of funds, it's better management of the money, and in my opinion, this resolution is the best way to go.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 11 ayes and 2 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 21162 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O. 2167, recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday and revising the holiday section of the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O. 2167.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 12 ayes and 1 nay.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2167 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O. 2168, moving the location of a no parking zone on the west side of Conker Street at its intersection with Mount Pleasant Street.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O. 21068 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure, and may I speak to this briefly?
Alderman Cleve.
I won't be as brief as Alderman Dowd.
Oh, come on.
The reason for this change was when it was originally printed, it had placed it on the opposite side, so that's why we're, that's why we have the Goldenrod copy of it, and I will speak to the entire at the next motion.
Motion is to amend by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy. Further discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. I'm sorry. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 ayes and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Cleve.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to motion for final passage of O. 21068 as amended, and may I speak to this, please?
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you. Notice I didn't use the word briefly, but...
I didn't know it was in your vocabulary.
It's not. My mother said I came out talking, so, anyways, the reason for this ordinance in general was because the, there are a number of houses on Mount Pleasant towards the end that enter into, Mount Pleasant is a one-way, so they have to enter into Concord Street, and in order to take a left onto Concord Street, the vision was not quite well enough, so by allowing parking to be there in this particular area, it was cutting off the visual of cars coming, and sadly, cars do not use the speed limit of 30 miles per hour on Concord Street, they tend to go a little bit further, so for the safety of those residents that were pulling out from Mount Pleasant, we put this in. A street engineer came, took a look at it, agreed to it, we did a measurement, we brought some of the residents out, and they were happy with this change, so thank you.
Thank you. The motion is for final passage of ordinance 2168 as amended. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 ayes and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 2168 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 21163, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Oh, and Alderman Karen, sorry. Alderman Schmidt? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21164, relative to the transfer of $30,000 from account 70100, general contingency to accounting classification 51, salaries and wages in administrative salaries and wages in administrative services, $25,000 in economic development, $5,000 for the purpose of funding salaries.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R21165, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into communications tower lease agreement.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of Resolution R21166, relative to the approval of an updated New Hampshire Department of Transportation project agreement and acceptance and appropriation of federal and surface transportation funds from the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of improving the existing signalized intersection where East Hollis Street and Canal Street meet Bridge Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Karen, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure, Human Affairs, and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of Resolution R21167, relative to the acceptance of $16,138,777 from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, SLFRF program established by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to cover eligible expenses and/or revenue replacement in responding to COVID-19 impacts.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself.
You missed my hand as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Kelly. That's okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R21168, establishing an opioid abatement expendable trust fund funded by appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of $27,223.40 into the expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first...
Alderman Cle.
Alderman Cleaver, sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman meeting, public hearing on Monday, September 27, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R21169, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into an agreement and consent to joint use with Liberty Utilities in making a supplemental appropriation of $38,394.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien. All right.
And Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Clemmons, okay. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, September 27, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R21170, relative to the approval of the Imagine Nashua 2021 Master Plans.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. New business ordinances? There is none. Period for public comment. If anyone wants to address the board, now is the time. We have a three-minute public comment period. Three minutes each. Anyone that...
Lori Ordolano.
Lori?
Yes, hi. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just a couple of quick things. I know the mayor had spoken with you, maybe some of you, about the changes in the assessments that will be coming next year in 2022. And he indicated that he would have a meeting in September to brief the board on what's happening with commercial properties. And I think now is the time to do that. We've all been able to read in the newspaper what's happened up in Manchester with their new reevaluation that came out, five-year reevaluation for 2021. And I think we're in for, you know, a significant issue here next year. And I think we should be briefed on this and have a discussion, and the board should be informed. I'd also like to talk to you about a situation that I feel needs to improve with our data handling and our records in City Hall. I think that the legal office has created a situation where they're showing some pretty bad faith in how they're handling right-to-know requests. Since they did a training seminar in June, they're no longer signing right-to-knows that are given back to citizens when they're complying with requests for information. So unless it's coming out of the legal office, there's a signature. But all of those right-to-knows that are coming out of administrative offices or departments are unsigned. And that's creating some issues because in departments that have six agencies underneath them, you don't know who is actually responding. And it's really a show of bad faith. I want to let you know that I worked with a citizen who wanted to get access to minutes that were not posted online. Minutes, June Karen spoke about this at a meeting. Minutes are your most basic record to obtain. It should be very simple to get minutes. Really shouldn't even require five days. It took almost two months and eight back-and-forth emails to try and get the city to provide the minutes to an agency that weren't properly posted. It wasn't clear that all the minutes were there. It's ridiculous that citizens are fighting this hard for records that should be basic public records. Clearly, there's a lot more training to do. And we need to get rid of that bad faith that's being exhibited by this city. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment? They see no one. Remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start on this side tonight. Alderman Harriet Gathright? Remarks? All set? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So there's a public hearing scheduled for Thursday evening about the citizens petition seeking an amendment to the city charter relative to the nomination and confirmation of appointments to the National Board of Police Commissioners. I was wondering if I could ask Corporation Counsel to explain what the purpose of this public hearing is. This is the citizens' petition. This is not the petition or not the resolution that was pending before us.
Correct.
As I understand it, so could I ask you to have Corporation Counsel explain the purpose of the public hearing?
Yes. Attorney Bolton?
Well, anybody's guess is as good as anyone else's. What I can tell you is it's required by statute. What the legislature was thinking, if they were thinking, they don't explain. It may be that the thought was that having a public hearing would provide community interest and the populace could become better informed as a result. That is an absolute guess on my part. The legislature does not, in passing laws, always explain what its purpose is. I will tell you that when citizens petition for an amendment to the city charter have the required number of signatures, the governing body, in our case, the Board of Alderman, is required to have a public hearing and then are required to put the question on the ballot without authorization.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So that's what I guessed as well. So basically, it's an opportunity for the people who are in favor to say why they're in favor of this. And it's an opportunity for the people who are against it to say why we should vote against it. But the Board of Alderman is not going to be voting on this. This is now going to be on the ballot, and it's going to be up to the voters to decide one way or the other.
That's true.
And this hearing is just an opportunity for people to voice their support or opposition, as I understand it.
Yes.
So thank you. And I have another point.
Alderman Jettie.
I probably should have said this during the debate, but on the issue of the surplus and whether the surplus should be used to, you know, should be retained to lessen the burden on the taxpayers next time around, or this surplus should be used for various projects. And when people say it doesn't affect the tax rate because people have already paid this money, they've already paid the taxes, it kind of reminds me of when my mother sent me to the store to buy a loaf of bread and gave me what she estimated was the cost of that loaf. And if, when I got there, I found out that the loaves were on sale and it was a lot cheaper to get the loaf of bread, she expected me to come back not only with the loaf of bread, but with the change. I didn't get to keep it to spend on candy or some other purpose. And I'm not sure my analogy is correct, but it's what I think of when I look at how, when people say, "Well, the taxpayer have already paid this money, so it is better for us to spend it rather..."
Hi, my name is Lori Ordolano. I called earlier today to see if I could line up a reporter to do deposition.
Sorry, I don't know if Ms. Ordolano was calling me or... But so I'll end there. Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Remarks? Alderwoman Lou.
I just want to say that the welcoming week celebration was really fun. And it was so much more than I had ever expected. There wasn't a huge turnout. There were several hundred people, I suppose. But, boy, it was wonderful. So next time, try to make it.
Alderman Tenza.
So I'm just curious now as to how much a loaf of bread costs when Alderman Jettie was a kid. Was it a nickel? Was it a dime? How much was it, Alderman Jettie?
A lot less than it is now.
Yeah. And so it just...
And if you had bought more then, you'd have more now. And candy too.
To piggyback on Alderman Jettie's comments, and I hear comments being made, and it always makes me uneasy that what one Alderman may say about taxes and spending, you know, gets attributed to all of us. I mean, I think we all have our own ideas. Even if we don't, you know, if we all sat here and expressed them all at every ordinance that came up, we would be here for weeks and weeks and weeks. But, you know, I don't think a lot of us feel that just because the money has already been collected that it can't, you know... It's, well, it's not being used for a good cause when we keep them in the, you know, what it's been appropriated for or separated out for in the budget. I mean, we all are conscientious of, you know, using people's tax dollars wisely. We may differ as to what, you know, we think is ultimately the best way to use them. But I think everyone here is using their vote in studying the budget and approving the budget, which we all think is best. So I hope we all keep that in mind moving forward.
Oh, Alderman Clemmons. Sorry.
President Willsher. When my mother sent me to the store for a loaf of bread, she would expect me to get the best bargain that I could. And if I did that, of course, I'd come back and return the money to her, whatever was left over. And she'd save that money for next week to buy bread. But because I spent it wise, sometimes she would reward me for doing that. So I think what you have is a situation here where, you know, we, as a city, saved quite a few money, quite a bit of money, millions of dollars in people's taxes last year. There are some projects that, you know, were wants. There were some projects that were needs. We separated those out. You could say the needs were the candy, and the wants were the bread for next year or next week. And, you know, that's a tradition that's been going on in this city for years. And the only reason that we can keep doing that is because we manage our budgets very well. And we have very smart financial people at the helm of this city, including, well, outgoing treasurer for debt and... I'm blanking, but yeah. So my point, anyway, is, and it kind of echoes Alderman Tenza, is that, you know, we all have different views and whatnot on that. But at the end of the day, I think it's hard to argue that the city is mismanaged or doesn't manage the money that we have because we are, after all... We just had a resolution come in tonight to put back millions of dollars towards tax relief for next year or for this year. So, you know, we can't do that unless we manage things correctly. So I appreciate the analogy. And I think what it shows is that you can, there's more than one way to look at things, even if it's the same analogy. So I appreciate everyone's time this evening. Thank you.
On this side, Alderman Karen. I'm all set. Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Just a couple of things. One, on the middle school building project. The Fairgrounds Middle School has been completed on time, under budget. And we are now working diligently on Penachuck Middle School. And that project will be completed the end of next summer because it's a more complex building project. So the middle school project's going well. The other thing is that the mayor and I did a tour of Fairgrounds, and it's online in a couple of different places. I believe it's on the TV, and it's also on the school's website. And anybody that wants to take a look, anybody went there when they were younger buying bread, could take a look and see just how much it has been improved, both in facilities and also in the air that the students breathe. Because that's the whole new HIVEC program, which will be on all three schools. And we were doing some of that anyway. Some additional things were done because of COVID, but it uses all outside air. And the amount of fresh air that the students have is significantly more than they had before. So just wanted to say that. The other thing on the Lake Likes, there are a number of items on there that are critical that need to be placed, approved. The one was police overtime. We've already had one murder since we passed the budget. And you can't plan ahead too much for that. That's why there is an overtime contingency fund, which we are now funding. It got down very, very, very low. And it's either that or that we come back during the year and appropriate more money for the police department. You just can't get around that. And the other thing, SURF. We're woefully short of the money in SURF. If the program was working the way it had been designed, there'd be a lot more money in there. And you'd put aside a certain amount of money every year for the item as it goes through its lifecycle. And then when it's done, you'd have the money in there to buy it. That's not the case. So there's a lot more on SURF. And hopefully, we have an evening where it's fully defined because it's a very complex subject. So just wanted to mention those things. Oh, just one other thing. Elm Street, the Elm Street funds now that are being allocated are for a study to determine what can be logically done with Elm Street so it can be, after it's not a middle school anymore, any school, that it can become a back-on-the-tax rules. And the study is to determine what we can sell it for and just exactly how the building will be divided up. So it's very critical because the amount of money we'll get back on tax revenue will be far exceed that amount of money. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Apparently, I'm older than everybody else here because my mother didn't send me to buy bread. She made her own. And so I guess that makes me a little bit different. But I do want to also speak to the escrow and how we use them. We did return some back to the taxpayers. And there may be many there that say return it all. But as it was pointed out, the key here is to know when we can fund certain projects at a lower rate than it might happen. I know they're talking about groceries going up like 30% in the next couple of months or so. I know going to a restaurant, a what used to be a $9 hamburger is now $15 and $17. So prices are jumping quickly. And I think that it's best for us to take advantage of these things. I'm glad that we are putting money back into the SURF. It is important, as Alderman Dow had pointed out. It has been woefully underfunded. And it's one of those things that I think we sacrifice when we need money in other areas. And it's time to put some of that money back. The other thing is that sometimes it's easy to say, "Why do we need this one item?" or "Why do we need that one item?" "It doesn't affect my ward," or "I don't see the benefit of it for the city." Well, that's one voice or two voices or maybe five voices. But that's why we have 15 people here, is because we look at it as a city hall. The One Voice program, I sit there and say, "Well, you know what? I'd like something like that in Ward 3." As a matter of fact, I'm thinking of talking to somebody about that because we need it in the French Hill area. But the truth is, Alderman Lopez... But the truth is Alderman Lopez has worked very hard towards that, and the mayor has been so kind in that project and so on. And it brings the community together. It brings them together to vote on what they think they need and so on. And I don't think it's that much money in the long run for the benefit that we get and the community, especially in the areas that it's meant for. So to cherry pick one or two or 10 items off of the list, I just don't think it's right. We need to look at it as the whole, and maybe there were one or two things there that I didn't like, but I'm not going to ask to have them taken off. So thank you so much.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to just do a little public service announcement. Next Tuesday, September 21, at 7:00 p.m., we're going to have a special Board of Aldermen's meeting, and we're going to invite a representative in the New Hampshire retirement system. And I think we're going to have Mr. Marty Collin will be here. And I just want to tell the folks at home, believe me, this is the elephant in the room. The New Hampshire retirement system is a $9 billion account. And last year, it only made 1% in interest. Now, if I took that $9 billion and put it into Michael O'Brien's savings account, number one, I would be arrested, but I would make more than 1%. How does this happen? It's going to be questions that I think that we can ask. What about the fast-tracking? Where did that come from? Why does that exist? By the year 2039, we're supposed to fund our unfunded liabilities on an account that has $9 billion. They used to pay 35% in 1968. They cut it back from 35%. Well, not in '68, but it exists in '68, and they cut it back. So today, the state pays nothing. Why? I put a bill in to get just 5% to come back to help Nashua, Manchester. It was backed by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. It failed. It failed. So these are questions that I think need to be asked. I'm sure the mayor would agree. But it's one of the things that constantly face us as we work our budgets. Yes, we deserve to pay our people a good retirement, an affair retirement. But the state seems to be having some troubles mismanaging. So I'm looking at this, not like the circus is coming to town, more like a root canal. But I think this is going to be pretty good, and I think it's definitely going to inform the public on what's going on here. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, well, I urge everybody to go to this retirement meeting, get some questions answered. But I just have one thing to mention about tomorrow. There is scheduled to be a story about Nashua on NBC Nightly News. The NBC News crew was here last week. The thrust or the purpose of the story is to explore the changing demographics of our city. As you probably saw, the population did grow from the last census from 86-odd thousand to over 91. And the nature of the community has changed over that time, and the direction of the story has to do with those changes. So now, could it get bumped or something? Maybe. But they were up here, and we've been told it will be on tomorrow, tomorrow night, on the NBC Nightly News. So let's find out, and hopefully it'll be there.
Committee announcements? No committees? Alderman Tenza?
So on Monday evening, 7:00 p.m., Planning and Economic Development will meet. Director Marchant will be there to talk about the master plan, which is very exciting, first master plan that the city has undertaken in almost 20 years. It will be an important meeting for anybody, and I invite everybody on the board to be there. A lot of good ideas have been talked about in the master plan committee. However, the first step in the master plan is to address our zoning and land use laws. So we'll be a little, maybe a little different from what people are thinking, maybe a little bit more technical. So I would invite everyone to come. I promise it'll be a good time, and we'll learn a lot about, you know, the zoning and land use changes we need to make in order to affect all of the great ideas that the master plan committee has come up with. Thanks.
Any more committee assignments, I mean, committee announcements? None. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. Yes, I do have one, Madam President. On Wednesday, 9:22, 7:00 p.m. in the chamber, will be the Committee on Infrastructure.
This Thursday night, we have a meeting, a public hearing on the police commission matter. So that's this Thursday at 7:00. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the September 14, 2021 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 13 ayes and zero nays.
And we are adjourned at 8:45 p.m. Thank you, everyone.